One, we are always very well represented as a council and staff at the Lola meetings. But it was a point of pride that multiple mayors, city managers and city staff came up to congratulate the city of Weed. Every Lola meeting, every town's mayor administrator gives up and gives gets up and gives a quick update on what's going on as we have these quarterly. Weed as a city by far had the most improvements in process. These are projects the staff has been working on long term, grants that the city has been working to, to, you know, get and implement and future projects that we have approved and are beginning or starting the process of planning. So it was, it was a nice, nice accolade from all the other cities in the county to hear that we've got so much going on in Weed. So thank you again to staff for making that happen. It's always nice when you get compliments at, you know, meetings like that. Also to echo the council, I would like to invite everybody in the community to come and join us for Carnaval. The chamber has put quite a bit of work into ensuring that we have a good lineup of music, carnival rides and family activities. So it's an annual tradition here in Weed and, you know, for the seven of you following us along at home and anybody that watches this the next couple of days, please share and bring everybody out to come and enjoy a staple here in our community. All right, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have several items tonight. The first item is by motion, council will consider approving purchase for nine one one upgrade call processing equipment for the Weed Police Department. Item B by motion, council will consider approving minutes from the June 12th, 2025 regular meeting, the June 23rd and June 30th, 2025 special meetings. And item C by motion, council will consider approving payment warrants dated June 10th, 2025 through June 24th, 2025, including any voided warrants and manual issued items totaling eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. No, that was a regular business. Okay, all right. Any discussion on the consent agenda or public comment?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as written.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. As there are no items removed from consent, we will move on to our next item, which is a public hearing. So our first public hearing will be for the Community Development Block Grant closeout, 2022 CDBG zero 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 one five, the City of Weed Water and Sewer Project. Now we'll move on to our staff report.
Hello, council. So this is a requirement by CDBG to do a public hearing for the closeout. It was a water, it was Water and Sewer Project. There, it was split up into two different sections. The first section was done by Mike Peters Construction. That was completed back in 2023. It was approximately four thousand feet of water line raging from one inch to twelve inch. It started up there at North Davis, went down Roseburg Parkway in East Lincoln. That helped to provide better fire flow for the firefighters, for the Angel Valley and Lincoln Heights community. They also did a sewer line there on White Avenue, right in front of the school. Previously, the sewer line was so shallow, you could kick the dirt off of it and expose it. So that needed to be upgraded badly. The second part of the project was a SCADA system, which the SCADA system does control, allow our tank, water tanks and our wells to communicate with each other. So that way everything will, so that way the wells will automatically fill up the tanks without a whole bunch of overtime, going out to the guys to, just to turn on some wells. That project, there's just a few items that need to be checked off that list, but it sounds like in the next week or two, it will be completely wrapped up. Tonight, we do have Alicia Garcia from Great Northern with us. They help out tremendously, as you guys know, with helping us get this funding through CDBG and she'll provide you with further information.
All right. The attachment is in your guys' handout. And my name's Alicia Garcia. I'm the project coordinator for Great Northern Services and also the grant writer that helps get some of this funding. So like Chris was saying, the SCADA project was put into place. We worked on, not we, not me. They worked on five water tank sites, including three well sites, the South Well, South Weed Well, the Mizzell, Mizzay Well and the Carrick Well. As of today, the water sewer portion of the project is complete. The SCADA system is ninety percent, ninety-nine percent complete. And we are trying to hurry because this grant closes August 7th, so we've been kind of pushing the contractors along a little bit. The budget for this project was two million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand. Of that, forty-five thousand was used for general administration. Two point five million was expended for construction. That has been expended as of May, 2025. The city is expected to disencumber approximately a hundred and sixty thousand when all is reported and complete. I think that's it.
All right. Thank you for the report. Do we have any interested parties, proponents or opponents that would like to come up and speak? All right. Seeing as there is none, we will now close the public hearing if there's no public comment.
Thank you, Alicia.
All right, council, discussion on the project closure and the action here. Sounds like a job well done.
It is a job well done. I do have one question, of course. Streets, is the repair of the streets in any of this, or is that something that we have to go search out?
So what street, so the only street that got done was North Davis from Shasta, from basically Shasta down to Roseburg Parkway. And then they also, of course, did the, just repaved the cutouts as part of this project.
But no new streets?
Well, bowls. But that was something completely different.
Driving down Main Street instead of rocking my teeth out, so it's okay. Yeah, it does keep you awake. But the repair is at least a positive sign, I have to say, and a good job. I appreciate that. I think the whole council appreciates the hard work there.
Yes, I'm sure all of our citizens, I know myself and my family, appreciate clean running water and toilets that flush, so. All right. We have a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept this report, the closeout of twenty-two CDBG dash zero 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 one five, City of Weed Water slash Sewer Project.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Project is hereby closed. All right, our next public hearing is the administrative citation appeal hearing regarding zero six zero three one two one two zero 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 regarding a property with Joyce Oliver. We'll go on to our staff report.
Thank you. The property owner at one fifty-three Main Street has requested a citation appeal for a citation issued in May. A little bit of background on that, the building itself has been red tagged as uninhabitable by the building department since August of 2022. In March of 2025, March eighteenth, to be exact, a citation was issued. I will point out that it says citation Adam one three six zero. It's actually Adam one three six one was issued that day. One three six zero was issued to another entity, but so thirteen sixty-one was issued on the eighteenth of March, 2025. Two days later, at the property owner's request, the city accompanied the property owner into that building for an inspection to point out the issues that had previously been pointed out. So going back a little bit further, we're currently three building inspectors have participated in this. It's been ongoing that long. So we went in with the second building inspector who had not red tagged it, but to point out the problems with the building on the twentieth of March, 2025. With, with us that day were obviously myself, Public Works Director and the Fire Chief. And there was also a structural engineer hired by the property owner that was going to come up with a plan to rehabilitate the building. We gave them thirty days to come up with some sort of timeline and plan. After two months, so in May of 2025, we had not received that. We, we would later receive notification from the structural engineer that due to health reasons, he was going to pull out of that project. Citation was issued on the twentieth of May, 2025, citation fourteen twenty-seven. That is the one that we are here to hear the appeal for. That was what the appeal form was submitted for, that citation. I will note, it says in the discrepancies, again, there's an error there. It says that the thirteen sixty was out of the fifteen day appeal period. Obviously, since that was marched, that is not the one they're appealing. They're appealing fourteen twenty-seven, but that was also without, beyond the fifteen business day appeal period. It was twenty days at that point, but we're still hearing the citation because the timeline. Two, two more citations were issued, Adam, excuse me, A fourteen thirty-one on five thirty twenty-five and A fourteen fifty-two on six eleven twenty-five. Those are all related to the blighted property and within the municipal code. I have brought the building inspector in to, the current one, this is now our third, since this whole timeline started going back to 2022. He and I recently inspected the building and he observed the same issues within the building that the two previous building inspectors had observed. We have some photographs, if you'd like to see those of the building, to show the condition and prove that it is a blighted property within the municipal code.
Okay, we will now open the public hearing and we'll start with our presentation, presentation from staff for the photos of the building.
So this is the front of the building on Main Street looking east. As you can tell, it's a former hotel. You can see the boarded windows on the second floor. If you want to go to the next one. Same, different angle, Main Street looking east. Again, broken windows on the, on the second story. Boards have been placed over those, not only to stop any, we have problems with some glass falling out, but those were also, we have problems with people entering the building, both from the staircase on the north side, but also from the property on the south side. They were crossing over, getting on the roof, crossing over into the building. And that's just a closeup. I will point out immediate to the far right, the crack in the exterior wall, that'll come up later, but please note that upside down U-shaped cracked wall going all the way up to the parapet. This is the back of the property. Again, boarded windows. The staircase is a safety concern. I'll let the building department address that if needed, but primarily there is no handrails on the upper level. The staircase is not supported by any means other than it connects to the top. They've been advised by two, if not three, building inspectors, the two most recent, I know for sure, advised them to secure that staircase, if not remove it, due to the safety concerns. They, the last, most recent inspection that we did, they were told that day, they told us they would secure that staircase and it has not been secured as of today when I drove by it. Just a different angle. This is electrical on the, underneath the exterior walkway on the north side. You can see the charring. Not sure when that occurred, that I didn't notice that when it was inspected back in March. So I don't know if that's current, if that's happened since then, but I did not notice that at the time. That is from the most recent inspection.
Is there currently power energized, that building?
So out of the six panels, one of them is showing that it's active. There has been somebody, they, they stated they thought it was the power company. I don't believe it was. When we inspected in March, there was an issue with the, the incoming power from the pole to the weather hood that the power line goes into. It was actually laying on the roof. That looks like it has been adjusted by somebody, but it does not look like it was done by PP and L due to just how it is currently on the roof. That doesn't look like an installation done by the power company. This is the south wall. You're probably most familiar with the horseshoe pit area behind Cedar Lanes. The interior has, when we were there in March, there was a active drip within, inside the building that was coming down into an area that used to be a laundry type room. They stated that the problem was that somebody had pulled the gutter system off the exterior wall. I don't think that is the problem because this is actually a patch that is now failing that I would say has been there for some time. The wall is starting to bow, which you, can you go to the next picture? I don't know if I took a closeup. So that's not, that's not actually the part, there's part of that wall that's bowing. Looks like all that was put on there as a patch was chicken wire and stucco to the studs. This, you can see the paint peeling, various windows boarded up. All the windows are boarded up on the south side and there, we continue to have some glass fall down onto the neighboring property. That's the weather hood for the electrical going in. It has been adjusted since the March inspection, but that is still not a proper installation or setup. These are just interior pictures of, that's one of the apartments inside, bathroom, another apartment with, with the roof. That's a door that they are using to block that window. So when I pointed out the exterior crack on the south side, that is in the same room, looking out the south, looking south out that, the light coming in is, is light from Main Street. One of the apartments, that's actually the last apartment that was inhabited in 2022 when we red tagged it. Multiple electrical issues, some mold. Obviously, a lot of plaster and issues and paint issues. Different room, you can see the mold on the wall that, yeah, we didn't have that tested. We don't know what type of mold that is, but failing ceiling on the first floor above that is the, is a ceiling leading to another apartment. That's a different apartment than the one previously. Next. Next. These are all different rooms. These aren't the same room, different, different apartments. Next one. Similar to the one already seen, but that is a different room. So this is the area where there was leaking in, in March. The floor had some water on it. It's coming down inside the building as well as inside the wall.
And braced up.
Next. That's actually the back door that leads to the staircase. It's been secured by multiple doors and, and some two by fours. That's the staircase, interior staircase from the back of the building, leading down to the area where the water was observed leaking back in March. Those are holes in the, in the steps. Next. That is one of the commercial rental spaces in the front. That is the, if you're looking at the front of the building facing east, that would be the one on the bottom right. You can see the water damage to the ceiling. Next. Again, water damage. Next. Same, same commercial space, but this is a back room with a different part of the ceiling that's starting to come down. So this is the interior, looking out the front door of the commercial space that would be on the left. Broken window with a board over it. You can, can't really tell by the picture, but the building is sloping slightly, has a grade that slopes towards the south. Looking from, same room, looking towards the back. This room has the most recent work done on it. That work is believed to have been done without any supervision from the building department. There was some sheet rock and whatnot done in there, but it's had multiple per, in speaking with the property owner, there were at least two, two incidents of water damage within this room. Next. This is a, underneath the staircase that leads from the front up to the upper level in that room that I, from the previous photo, but this is the garbage and, and water damage underneath that staircase in, in a type of closet. This is a back room within that same commercial space. Just a different room with a failing roof and floor. This is, again, the same commercial space. You can see the electrical, not necessarily up to code in that space. We did do a walkthrough that, in the most recent walkthrough, there was a representative from electrical, electrical company that was going to put a bid in to service some of the electrical. It will not solve all the problems, though. It's only, I'll let, I'll let the building department speak to that, but it's not, not near what this building would take to make it habitable. Next. Okay, I'll defer to the current building inspector, Mike Britton, to add any comments regarding.
Thank you, Chief Mayor Berry. Council members, the inspection was very enlightening. Let's start with that. The most serious issues that I see are the structural issues. That front southwest corner is clearly sinking. There is a creek that runs between those two buildings that then continues to a pipe under the, the city road there. It's pretty significant. It's, it's, once you see it in person, it really strikes you. The city required them to provide an engineered plan to fix that, that section, and that's the issue we're running across is we didn't ever got that plan. But that's the most serious issue. The next one that I can, that I'm concerned about is the, it would be the southeast, southeast corner, I guess, that back corner where the wall is separating, stucco is separating. And there's a, a secondary electrical panel along that wall between the bowling alley. And if you follow up that wall, we didn't have a really good picture of it, it's cracked all the way down to the first floor and it's already separated an inch, which is pretty significant for a stucco wall. So there's obviously signs of leaks, could be from the roof. It's hard to say at this point. We weren't able to get on the roof. As far as the other issues, there, the electrical's in dire need of help. They did hire electrician that he is planning on replacing the existing outlets and switches that are in there, bringing them up to code. He will also be replacing the nine outdoor individual meters and putting in one large two hundred amp sub panel for that lower section. And he will only be making corrections in the lower. It's a, it's a minor adjustment, but it will at least make that section safe. It's my, to my understanding, he will be not providing power to the upstairs at all at this point. That will come under a different section of the, of the plan, depending on what she wants to do up there. The water damage is pretty significant in some areas. Some areas, it's, it's in really good shape. I believe if she can correct the issues with the structure, I think she'll have a viable place to do business. But there needs to be a lot of work and she, right now, she's addressing doors and windows and electrical, but we really need to see that engineered plan to make that building safe. We need to know what it's going to take and she, and she needs to know what financially, what it's going to take to make that happen.
So I have two questions slash concerns from an electrical mechanical engineering standpoint. My first concern is with the structure, the fact that it's separated enough that we can see daylight and there's obvious sinkage into and away from the, the building for the facade there. What risk do we have of that building collapsing into, you know, either the neighboring buildings or into Main Street and the public right away on the sidewalk itself?
So those are questions that have to be addressed by the engineer. I'm not a structural engineer by any means. Spent a lot of years in contracting. Having not seen that crack in March and even the previous year, I think it's something we need to keep an eye on. So I've had other buildings where I've requested the property owner actually make two marks and measure it in millimeters and let me, keep me informed on that distance. And maybe that's something I can address with Joyce that she'll allow me in maybe quarterly and I'll pick a location and we'll see if it's continuing to separate or if it's stabilized. It is the one corner of the building, but it's a pretty important corner. So if it were to fail, you know, you'd lose the front half of that building. My other, my biggest concern was really that side panel because if that comes down, it will, even though it won't hit the bowling alley, it could damage some of the structure there. They have, they have a propane tank back there. There's some other outbuildings. That, that's really something that I can see would happen first before the front fail. But again, the front, I think you need to get a structural engineer to actually come in and do an assessment on that. And that's what the city has requested.
So I will add that that stucco piece is of concern and it directly affects the neighboring property's ability to use that, their own section of what used to be the horseshoe pit. If they want to develop that into anything, they have to take into consideration, you know, most of the glass is gone, but they have had glass falling out and now that wall that potentially could fail.
So my, my second and equally important concern is with the electrical, the fact that, that building is partially energized and there are scorch marks coming from the power lines is indicative to me of, you know, failure. And so that is an extreme fire hazard as well as a shock hazard, especially with the kind of winters we have with the snow, rain and wind. And so we're adding that, you know, complexity of live electrical energy, a hundred and twenty volts that could go through potentially building materials if they come loose on the neighboring properties or in the public. And so those are the two main concerns that, you know, I see from a safety standpoint, want to mitigate immediately, that the property needs to address. And so that, that's horrifying to say the least, to, to see those photos and what's going on with that structure.
Yes, so she has applied for a permit and the permit's been issued to take care of that, that electrical portion. I was surprised that one meter was live when I went, took some pictures a few weeks back. All of them were closed, but one was shown open. So I'm glad she's pursuing that part of it and he is going to be making those repairs and making sure that electrical is within conduit that we saw on the outside.
Now, is there any interest with the PP and L with the power company to notify them of what our findings are from a safety standpoint for them, since they are in charge of that electrical line feed going in?
Yeah, the power company is responsible to the weatherhead. As Chief mentioned, the weatherhead is not to code laying on the side like that. So one of the items electrician will be doing is setting the weather, turning the weatherheads upright so that they do meet code. But the power company doesn't have any responsibility beyond that part. It's up to the building inspector or Public Works to notify them of the issue and then you can go through the process of requesting that meter be pulled.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask why we granted a building permit for the electrical, knowing that the structural will remain it being red tagged?
Sure. So billing being red tagged, we can't have any kind of occupancy, but we can allow contractors going and do work to try to lift the red tag. So after talking to the Public Works and Chief Mayor Berry, we decided that it's, it's better to move forward and get that electrical repaired for sure. And we'd like to see the doors and windows. And we'd like to see the doors and windows replaced, just to upgrade the building overall while we're waiting for that engineered plan.
But we don't have any information, she hasn't provided a name of a structural engineer company?
She had a structural engineer that had to back out due to health reasons. And she notified us, she sent us a letter notifying that a few weeks back. But to my knowledge, she hasn't provided any additional information. We have given out several names of local engineers that she could contact.
Do we know if we have any structural engineers who are willing to do the job if the city was willing to lean the amount that they do in work?
We can definitely look into that and find out.
I'd be interested to know if we have someone who is interested in our community, willing to come forward, do the work on acceptance of a lien issue for that building. If, if the building owner can't get themselves going, I see that the city should probably put something into works to light the fire under that. Especially because I share the same concern as the mayor. I'm concerned of falling debris either onto Main Street or into the back area of the bowling alley who have been a strong contributor to the community, making sure that we have a nice family center for people to go to. And certainly I would love if they expanded their family friendly activities that they have. Would like to support them in that, so.
Additionally, I'd point out that this building also meets the requirement for vacant property registration. We haven't been citing them for that. We've been focusing mainly on the blighted property, but it's also currently not registered as required by the municipal code as a vacant property.
I would say that my major concern is with any compliance at all. This has been ongoing for like several other properties with really no remedy in sight. We take out a building permit, but I feel a lot of those just fall by the wayside. It's not our issue, it is our issue because there comes a point is what good are they? They're not going to, they're just, it seems like they're just appeasing us for a little bit. We back off and all of a sudden something else happens. John, I, I remember John fixing that portion of the building as an owner, owner. Up on some ladders, just day by day fixing that piece himself with chicken wire and stucco. That's been, oh, 12, 14 years ago. I have to say that it lasted 12 or 14 years, but, and then the interior of those buildings is, just makes me a little bit ill. But again, I'm, I'm just, I'm not sure, unless we get something, just can we get a commitment somehow? Can we make that kind of a, a demand? Well, I mean, I see fixing piece by piece, but.
If I can intervene just on a procedural point, can we first make sure that no one in the, there's one member in the audience? Anyone wants to speak on behalf of the appellant before we continue this discussion?
Sure.
Do we have any proponents that wish to speak? Do we have any opponents that wish to speak or any further public comment?
Anyone on Zoom?
I'll note, I'll note that the property owner was provided both with a mailing that there was going to be a hearing and hand delivered a notice that there was going to be hearing.
And does she have the, next thing would be, does she have the financial wherewithal to do all of this?
So at this point, since we have no public comment for or against, I'm going to close the public hearing while we proceed to move on to council discussion of the project.
Can I get clarification? Chief Mayor Berry, I'm looking at resolution 21 dash 2025. In the third paragraph, it's indicating that citation A1361 was issued on March 19th, 2025. Should that be corrected to March 18th?
Yes, it should be March 18th, 2025 was the issue date of that, 1361.
And for legal advice here, is there anything that would stop the city from soliciting structural engineers willing to take on a project based on the fact that we would lean on whatever we would incur from their work?
If, if the council or, or the city, whoever is authorized to make a determination that a nuisance condition exists and you typically seek a court order to allow an abatement warrant. If that's granted and then you can enter the property and abate it yourself, then the costs incurred there can be confirmed by the council through adoption of a resolution, you'd hold another hearing. And then those could be collected through a special assessment or lien and typically collected on the property tax roll. So that is an option that would require a bit more procedure in the meantime.
Okay, and so let me clarify if following that process, if we were to find a structural engineer who is willing to do the project, knowing that it would be a lien and not the count, not the city paying out for the actual work, then the city council would have to approve that whatever that structural engineer is charging is appropriate and reasonable? And we would have to adopt that particular fee in order to be able to convert it to the lien?
Oh, it would be through, you would follow your typical procurement process? Or if you went through a court and they awarded a receivership, then it would be up to the court to handle how they wanted to abate it? But if the council wanted to move forward with that, we would hire them as we would for any other public project and then seek to recover that way?
Is there any way to do it without the city expending the funds if the person is willing to accept the lien as payment?
No, I believe the city would still have to incur the costs upfront and then we would recover it later.
Sounds like the answer is no.
Well, I, I heard the typical way, I'm asking the atypical way. In other words, obviously we know some structural engineers who are community proponents who are willing to do the work. And obviously they can access, at least determine whether or not there's a chance they could recover on a lien and may choose to do that, even though the city doesn't have the funds to expend to pay for it. So is there a way, knowing that we're accepting the bill from the person without payment out, that we can apply the lien so that the lien is paid directly to the civil engineer?
I think that would be something we need to look into and know the specific proposals before we could, well, before I could opine on that. I have not seen that myself.
I would like to know because if there is a way that we could get somebody who is willing to accept a debt on a building and the city doesn't have to magically come up with the funds to be able to move this project on. I know it's an atypical situation, but I'm looking for atypical solutions. So if we could put that, if the council agrees, I'd like to know the answer to that question.
I would also ask to add one other spot. I think I know what you're after, but if we put a lien on one property and the owner has multiple properties, can we lean the one we're working on and lean other properties that they own?
I do not believe you can do that. I think you have other, you have other options. Sometimes I've, I've seen withholding permits for other properties if it's owned by the same party, things like that. But I have not seen a lien against a property that wasn't actually the property subject to abatement.
Okay.
And no way you can hold it as surety?
The other, another property? I have not come across authority to do that.
Although I assume you could get a court order saying they couldn't dispose of property without paying the liens that are already owed?
I, I think a court could, could issue orders that give the city more protection in that case. And then in that vein, we might be moving more towards another court ordered receivership in that instance as well.
But it may, it may allow a person to consider voluntarily handing over a building as far as the receivership is concerned.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
So in other words, voluntarily abandoning the project to allow it to go into receivership as opposed to us litigating it?
Yes, that could happen. Yeah.
Okay, I think my, my specific question that, with the consent of council that I would like to know the answer to is, is it considered a debt to the city where a person has contracted with them in order to receive a lien on personal property? Without the transaction of money?
Okay, I think I understand the direction. Thank you.
So my question for staff then is, being as we, we've had no public interaction here and we are looking at a proposed resolution on this appeal. What is our timeline to abate this nuisance that we're giving to this property owner? How long is reasonable? I mean, it's been a number of years at this point. There is a notable significant safety hazard to the public in general and other property owners. And so for me, I want to know what a milestone timeline is for this property owner to remedy this situation before we have, you know, we're able to go to next steps. While I am not interested in the city taking on the debt of repairing this, I think it is in the best interest of our citizens that we mitigate the structural and electrical issues. However, that happens before it causes harm to people or property. And so that's, that's my question is, is how long of a timeframe is this property owner going to have to reasonably correct these issues?
Well, we haven't been provided with any plan to do that. What, what's being proposed here would be, require us, it depends on what you want to do. If you wanted to just make the building publicly safe, which that's taking away possible structural issue. That's an inspection warrant, some plywood and you secure the building, screw all the doors and windows shut. And then you're done, put a lien on the property for the materials and the cost of labor. Taking on the responsibility of rehabilitating that is going to require the receivership process, which can take up to five years, so.
My, my question is directly on what timeframes can we impose upon the property owner to make the necessary safety corrections?
I understand that, that's, we can, we have, we can speak with them and advise them that, you know, I think 30 days is appropriate just to make it, again, taking the possible structural issue out. To, to remedy the, the exterior wall in the south is going to be more of an eyesore than, I mean, you, you can remedy it by removing it and have open exposed studs, which is just going to be worse. I don't know that that's a better solution for the neighboring property. You know, it might be safer, but it's going to be more of an eyesore. Complete repair, I can't, I can't give you that number, but I, I don't, I, 30 days, I think is, is enough to secure, properly secure all doors and windows and remedy the electrical, either inert or fixed.
And that would include a plan from a structural engineer provided by the property owner to the city, that they have a plan to move forward with correction?
They previously were given 30 days and they didn't, after 60 days, that was when the second citation was issued. We received notice, I believe at day, around day 50, give or take, that the structural engineer was going to withdraw from that project.
May I ask another legal question? If the city chose to take on repairing the building, just hanging with me here, I hear the groans.
Yeah.
And obviously we would end up with a substantial debt. As opposed to leaning the property, could the city sue the property owner in request of the superior court to order the sale of a property to be able to meet the debt owed to the city?
I think this is overlapping with some of the city's power for eminent domain. At that point, we might have to adopt a resolution of necessity to take the property and force it into those kinds of proceedings. The special lien would essentially sort of act that way. If we had to go to court to enforce it with a foreclosure sale or something like that, the court could order that. I think there's a couple of ways, different ways that that could happen. It would still be typically enforcing a lien that we'd imposed through this abatement process or again, receivership, that's sort of the, the paths we could take.
But abatement would definitely be quicker because it would be, if we expended the funds, we come up with the debt. We adopt the debt, we give the right of appeal, superior court would either up or down. And then we could file a request in the superior court for a forced sale of a building to be able to recover our debt. The reason why I'm asking is this particular property owner owns more than one property. And while they may not be, or they may be in red tag status as well, even the forced sale would get us to a better place because then we would have a rehabilitated or at least partially rehabilitated building and another building that's not in that person's hands that is becoming crumbling. So not necessarily that, you know, that sale would be quick, but it seems to me that that process would be faster than the five-year receivership process. Or am I seeing that incorrectly in time wise?
No, I don't, I don't think you're incorrect. I would assume a court could, could do that, has the power to do that. Typically, again, I see liens recovered through the same process that we collect taxes, property taxes. So in terms of how quickly that would be recovered through, as, as essentially a tax on the property, I'm not sure.
Let's just assume that the property owner isn't paying their property tax.
Then I think you would ask a court to escalate and perhaps require foreclosure on the property. But that is not something I, I know off the top of my head how that would work in this exact situation.
Okay, so either foreclosure of the property itself or request to sell another property that is in that same person's basically monetary portfolio in order to cover the debt?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I don't know if a court would specifically force them to sell a property, but they would force them to come up with the money to make do on what, what is owed. The city doesn't have the power to compel them to, to do that, but a court perhaps would.
Is it possible for your firm to come up with a strategy? We're kind of beaten around a lot of different methods in order, I think what the council is really after is how to fix the building and get it back in marketable shape? Or have somehow, have the owner do it or somehow have us do it? But what would be the best strategy? Receivership is, we've been waiting for receivership for multiple properties. So if we have a, a strategy, at least maybe we can use it on this structure and other structures. Is that, that's kind of what you're after is figuring out a strategy, right? I mean, that's.
It seems to me, from what I've heard, given legal advice is the city council would have to be willing to give up a certain sum of money and get the building fixed. And it seems to me like we have a number of legal avenues to be able to recover the money from the property owner. It's a bold move by the city council, but quite frankly, you know, this, many city councils have sat, sat up here trying to get something done on Main Street and all of those have failed. And, and I hear our community highly concerned about Main Street. And it seems to me if we can get a clean procedure legally of if we were to expend this money, what is the quickest way we can try to reclaim it and what are our options?
I call the strategy, she, that's, that's to me, finding a strategy to get what this council wants is to put properties back in marketable shape or tenable shape. Somehow those properties have to be occupied or made at least have the ability for people to occupy them, whether it's a business or. Whether it's a business or, or whatever is going to belong.
So in summary, what I'm hearing from my fellow council members is a request to staff to look at strategy options in which we can take care of blighted properties to make them safe and or potentially habitable. In a timely, in a timely manner that does not drag on for years.
Understood. I have the two legal questions that we'll look into.
By next month, no.
All right, uh, so now, uh, do we have any further discussion on this?
Absolutely not.
We've, we've seen more than enough with this, uh, particular blight. So I will make a motion, the council adopt resolution number two thousand, uh, twenty-one dash two thousand twenty-five by title only. With the correction on paragraph three to the date changed from March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five to March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five in regards to the issuance date of citation number A one three six one. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now move on to regular council business. Um, item A, this was tabled from our June meeting for fire. By motion, council will consider second reading and adoption by title only of ordinance number four eight five dash two thousand twenty-five. Designating fire hazards severity zones as recommended by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection.
And I have another question for council, uh, I mean for legal council. Can this ordinance, uh, include a statement that this is adoption under duress? Based on the fact that we believe we have no option but to accept the finding?
Um, yes, I think you can. Um, the legal parameters here is that since it's already gone to first reading and we're on the second reading now, that we wouldn't want to make substantive changes that the public wasn't aware of in the first time around. Um, I do think we could add a recital or perhaps to the first section, say hereby designate the fire hazards severity zone as required by the California Department of Forestry instead of recommended. We can tweak the language slightly, yes, if there's clear direction on how you want that changed.
Or alternatively, we can start back at first reading with a statement that the adoption is based under duress based on the way that the government code currently reads.
I'm, I'm not sure that, that really requires going back to first reading. Well, typically, second reading changes, it's a typo or a formatting change. So that might, if we make a simple change, um, as required by the California Department of Forestry. I think that is a simple enough change to be fine on second reading. And a new paragraph that explains duress might, might tip the scales too far.
I, I hear you. My concern is that a change of one word like that, especially in the legal world, obviously, we see shall and may very differently than the community. I, I just want the community to know, I'm not in support of passing this resolution at all. Um, I feel like, and obviously coming from a background where the law is the law and you follow it. And if you don't like it, you go to the legislature and change it. Um, but in the same vein, I don't think as a city council member, it would be inappropriate to let the community know that this is an adoption under duress. Um, and so I guess that's my long way of saying, I don't know if the changing of the one word would send the message to the community.
So my opinion leading to a question for council.
Can we ask for public comment before we get into more opinions?
Of course. Uh, do we have any public comment on the second reading of this ordinance? Okay.
Go ahead.
So we're looking at second reading of changing one word from recommended to required. But in so doing, and this has been discussed for two months now, uh, for first reading and the tabling last month of the second reading. In so doing, um, we can share our opinion, I think, as a council, uh, here publicly on record that we are adopting this under duress without changing the language of the ordinance itself. Um, I would think that would be sufficient along with the hours of previously recorded council meetings that, you know, we have a strong opinion against this, um, as well as I would strongly encourage the council, should we adopt such a, a resolution under duress? That we send, uh, correspondence to the state, uh, sharing our concerns and duress with this. Is that amenable to the council for moving forward with this?
It's, it's amenable to me because one, whatever the state of California does regarding these fire zones. They have implications to fire rating. However, insurance companies have moved past that point anyway. Insurance companies, I, I wouldn't want to use this term dictating, but they are going above and beyond these fire scores, no matter what we do. And I think, I'm not sure the intent of this ordinance. Uh, but either way that we manage this ordinance. I know the insurance companies are dictating the rates, whether we have it or not. That that is that's an industry practice right now. Um, if people want to continue with the insurance marketplace as it exists, they, they are setting more rules than I think we're, we're privy to. I know they just, they're continually passing them down. So changing the language to required is fine with me. Making a statement under duress, that's fine with me as well. But I just don't have, see it as an impact other than a, uh, kind of a small formal protest. And I can get that. I, I can, I can stand behind that too. Uh, but as far as having impact, I don't see the impact. So.
So let me ask you a question. Counselor Westine, what wording did you want to change in that? And would that make a difference?
It would be the same resolution. It would just be a public declaration that we're adopting this under duress.
I'm good with that.
So I, I understand that I probably take a stronger view on this than the rest of the city council and, um, I, I would appreciate the change of required, but I don't think it would change my vote on this particular issue.
Wouldn't change your vote? Because I know what I'm paying on them and all we could do is protest. We're not doing anything.
It's just actually, it becomes ineffective unless you form a movement. And that would be require sending out. For me, that's my, my feeling is you would have to get other city councils in multiple cities to join in that, which you can do. It's an effort. I'm not volunteering for that committee, by the way. But, but, uh, I think then it has impact maybe, but even then, there's I think it's, all of this stuff is to stress fire severity. All I know is we were at Lola last night and there was one question, I don't remember where, where even the question came from, but since they're cutting down some trees at COS, everybody was up in arms about cutting down some trees and we're going trees, fire. We have a dorm we need to build. You can't build a dorm around the trees, although I do know I have some clients with trees in the middle of their decks, which is kind of it's not nice when I have to say you're going to have to cut those down. But it does, it has to be said, don't cut them down. I don't care, but I mean, that's my recommendation. But, um.
So coming back to the second reading.
Of stressing points of, uh.
It sounds like we have consensus amongst the council. Do we have any other discussion or questions of clarification for staff?
I just.
I looked at as, uh, I know the, the insurance, um, has a lot to do with it or implemented. But I looked at it as, as more of a safety. You know, knowing that we are in the, you know, in the, the safety point of it where we can actually implement. We know, we, because fire, this is not a first rodeo, we know. So for me, I think to, to be, to have that caution says, okay, we are there. And to put in mind, you know, um, packages where, you know, in case it happens and, and whatnot. Um, it is, I'm, I'm okay with moving forward with this. So that, that, that's my point of it.
I was just going to add that, uh, Chief Carter was advising me prior to the meeting that he'd had, uh, grant funding opportunity come across his email this week. And one of the top five requirements was adoption of this. They're already starting.
That's good to know. That was a question we had at agenda. So that is good to know. And we didn't have an answer.
There's, uh, doing some more research into it. There's something called the Fire Risk Reduction Community List. And it's through, um, CalFire. And one of the steps that you have to have in place to get on this list is the adoption of this ordinance. And if you were to be able to get onto this list, um, it gives you priority for local assistance through grant funding applications. If we are able to get on the Fire Risk Reduction Community List. And that is something in addition to the Firewise Community.
So I think at this point, after three months of exhaustive discussion and staff input, um, I will make a motion to adopt second reading, um, the adoption by title only of ordinance number forty-five dash two thousand twenty-five designated the fire hazards severity zones. Um, with the notation of change from recommended as required by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection. Um, and as stated previously, the public that we do so under duress. But we will adopt this so that we can be compliant with the state and move forward. Hopefully with potential grant mitigations and, uh, you know, understanding their community of the severity of fire concerns.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, next item is item B, Public Works by motion. Council will consider introduction of first reading by title only of ordinance number four eight six dash two thousand twenty-five. Amending Title Twelve, Streets, Sidewalks and Public Places of the Weed Municipal Code to after, to add Chapter twelve point oh six pertaining to encroachment and special event permits.
So during the recent encroachment permit, um, process, we recognize that there's really no direction for staff or for the public when they are, um, applying for an encroachment permit or for a special event. Um, so before you today are draft edition ready for introduction, first reading or modifications as the council deems appropriate. Um, this will help us out and the community out tremendously when they are applying for admission of permit.
I have a question. Is this written? Brand new, in other words, okay.
Correct, because right now we have nothing in place.
Okay, good, all right. Uh, did we interpret any costs for, uh, security?
I don't.
And or should we? I mean, that's been a, a point with, with, uh, the, with police and fire as far as extra personnel. And should that be part of the permitting process to come up with at least an outline of costs for security?
So right now we are currently working on that.
Okay, all right.
So my understanding from when I read through the agenda packet, information provided by staff is this is streamlining the process for applicants as well as giving direction to staff on how to process those applications and make it clear for both parties. Um, well, um, I'm excited to hear the staff is working on, uh, further, you know, um, clarifications to that process. I think it is important that we look at, um, what is our cost? And does it need to be captured by the city for these events? Um, rather than taking money from T O T to support local organizations that bring in tourism and support the community in general. That we consider in the future, the cost of security and, um, set up and tear down of the events and all the pre, um, work that goes in for notification to the public. Those costs need to be understood and then potentially pass on to the event organizers.
If, if I may, um, section twelve point oh six point one five oh, um, does contemplate being able to require a refundable security deposit. Uh, where you'd estimate, uh, potential costs for inspecting, securing, repairing, restoring the property. Um, and if they incur more, you can ask for them to pay the excess. If they incur less, they would be refunded the difference.
So security is mentioned?
That's, that's per property. Um, the security part deposit, like for example, if, if, uh, an entity rents the stage, the entity pays a security deposit for any damages. I think the intent of the council discussion tonight is for security of the event. So for example, if, um, a proponent comes before the, the staff and wants to close down Main Street for an event. Um, there's a cost there for, um, both the security of the, the, the event itself from the police department. And, um, as well as the cost for public works and staff administration to process. Um, you know, you've got the, um, you know, set up and tear down of barricades and or the stage. Um, as well as public notification has to be done by signage, uh, of, of the, you know, encroachment that's going to happen. I believe it's forty-eight hours in advance, uh, that we do. And so those all have costs the city bears. And, um, you know, unfortunately, there's no such thing as a free lunch. So, um, currently we're, you know, trying to offset those costs through T O T funds. Um, but even that isn't enough to a hundred percent make the city whole. So that's something that, you know, is being looked at.
Yeah, it's, um, sorry, Mr. Mayor, on the, uh, staff report under fiscal impact. Um, it does say that the, currently the staff is working on the fee structure for the permits and appeal fee. Um, we're doing some, uh, rate studies and, and looking at other municipalities. And we should have that before you in August.
Great. That's good.
So this, this reading here is, is just on the changes for the encroachment permit process to make it clear for staff and the permit applicants.
So my question would be like, for instance, in twelve point oh six point oh seven oh, um, you're giving a list of, of things that they have to do in order to get their encroachment permit. When we become, when we put in the fee schedule, um, does that mean we would be augmenting those to put in, for instance, to step fifteen, um, payment?
No, we don't necessarily have to do that because there's already another section that says as a condition you're going to pay any fees. Um, it is helpful to have it in one concise location, but course have upheld under like the Permit Streamlining Act where it's important to have checklists of what an applicant needs to provide, um, so we can deem whether it's complete or not. Um, that it's okay for it to be in different sections. And it is in another section, even if it's not specifically listed there. If you wanted to amend this, so on the second reading, it says and payment of any fee, we can do that, but I, it's not necessarily legally required, I don't think.
And I think the timeliness of this, uh, item right now for this resolution, um, the introduction of the first reading is we will have anticipated encroachment permits later in the year for annual events that are coming. And the intent, both for the remainder of this year as well as future events in, in coming years is to have that clarification for staff and the, the applicants. We can further modify, um, and addendize as we need to, to make improvements going forward. This is not a have to do all in one shot, although staff has been diligently working to make improvements. Um, and we do recognize that.
Any public comment?
Is there any section that you can, um, point out where it's giving a timeline, uh, a requirement that certain information is received within a certain time? Because I was reading like twelve point oh six point oh seven oh, and I know that we had some timing issues in some of our encroachment permits. And I just wanted to make sure that we're giving direction to everyone that, for instance, we needed fifteen days in advance or twenty days in advance or.
If I recall, I believe it stays forty-five days in advance, but I don't remember the exact section.
You're correct. That oh seven oh section says forty-five days. The issue is there is a The issue is there is a sort of catch hallway because courts have held if you on protected activity. Division B that says, you know, if, if you come and claim that this is first amendment protected activity, we can lax that forty-five days.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions from council? Uh, we'll open up for public comments at this point if we have any questions or comments from our public. No? I, I am enthusiastic that we do have public tonight, so thank you for being here and, and hanging out through, uh, all of this proceedings.
Uh, I'll make a motion to re, to adopt, uh, re- ordinance number four eight six two oh two five, amending title twelve, streets, sidewalks and public places of the Weed Municipal Code to add chapter twelve point oh six pertaining to encroachment and special event permits.
Hey, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, as we have tabled item C, we'll now move on to staff reports and we'll begin with Chief Carter.
All right, good evening. Uh, over the last month, we went on, uh, sixty calls for emergencies covered by two full-time personnel. For actually now five resident firefighters, we had a new resident move in on June twenty-third and one volunteer. Uh, continuing to respond to many vegetation fires, uh, throughout South Siskiyou County. I've been able to get on them pretty quick, um, but things are drying out, so we'll keep working hard on those. Uh, we completed a hundred hours of department training over the last month. Um, completed two fire and life safety inspections and three final inspections on mill fire rebuild houses. Also, uh, completed ten defensible space inspections. And we have had, uh, many people correct their violations, which is great. Um, next month, we're gonna continue to get more work done on our fuel mitigation project. Uh, now with Chesta Valley R C D, they've started to work on some of the, um, the, like walking around and, and making sure that none of the s- s- like, uh, areas that are worked on are gonna be impacted significantly. And they've had botanists do different surveys on some of their properties, so one thing that's holding us back on that is property owners getting their right entry agreements back to us, but we're slowly getting those back. Um, I attended the second meeting for the update and creation of the Weed Community Wildfire Protection Plan, where we worked on the map and started figuring out the area that that will encompass. So there's gonna be another one, um, where we can finalize that map. But that is all.
All right, thank you. Director Porterfield.
I don't have a lot to report other than, um, we are gonna have Charlie here at the end of July. We're starting, um, back into audits again, so, um, just, just moving forward. We're still busy.
All right, Director Davis.
So the water bypass project that's taking place on South Weed Boulevard, uh, that project's about seventy percent complete. Um, unfortunately, there has been a lot of water. We've had to shut off the water quite a bit this week, uh, and that's due to us not knowing what's in the ground, and unfortunately Timberworks found them the hard way. Or the easy way, um. The Bull Street, um, project, rehab project, uh, the paving took place today. Uh, J F Shea will be back out there tomorrow to raise up the utilities, uh, and that's it.
Chief Mayberry.
We had a successful animal vaccination clinic. Uh, we were able to get about twenty plus, uh, local licenses issued during that time. I want to thank Dr. Amy for her time on that. It's always, uh, she typically handles large animals, but for her to come out and help us put that on, that was greatly appreciated. Uh, invite everybody to, uh, Carnivali, uh, Weed Peace Officers Association's hoping, hosting a free swim day on Saturday. Uh, please come out between one and four, anybody under sixteen and under free, free swim.
Thank you. And our city clerk.
Uh, yeah, with the, uh, assistance of the Building Department Code Enforcement and as well as Chief Mayberry, we've been, uh, very active in business license, um, applications and, uh, requirements as well as other permits, um, in notifying businesses that do not, that are not permitted properly. So I do want to thank, um, Inspector Britton, he, every time he en- encounters somebody in the, in the town doing, doing work, he calls me to make sure they have a business license and he's been quite successful at, uh, getting them to obtain a business license. We appreciate that. So if you're coming to the city of Weed, please get your business license first before Inspector Britton has to contact you. We appreciate that, so, thank you.
All right, and our city attorney.
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. All right, at this point, we will now, um, accept the motion to adjourn to closed session.
I saw motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are now adjourned to closed session.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to open the special meeting as well?
Um, yes, we will go ahead and open our special meeting that will take place after we, um, adjourn back to open session.
Perfect, thank you.